Good evening, councillors. The first item of business is the confirmation of councillor Ishwood as chairman of the committee. Can I have agreement on that, please?
Agreed.
Good, thank you. Councillor Ishwood.
Thank you, members. Before we commence the rest of the meeting, can I just ask everyone to switch their phones to silent or to off? We don't aim to have a prax fire alarm this evening, so if the alarm goes off, please leave the building by one of three routes, 1, 2, 3. We meet under the canopy of Waitrose across the road. And with that, we'll move on, please, to the appointment of councillor Carol Coburn as the vice-chairman. Can I have a second, please? I propose. Thank you, Stephen. Is that agreed? Thank you very much. Right. Moving on then. Minutes of the meeting that took place on the 13th of April 2016 have been laid on table the last 30 minutes. Are you content that I've signed them as a true record of that meeting? Thank you. Apologies for absence. Emma?
We've had apologies from councillor Jim Edwards.
Thank you very much. Decrations of interest before the meeting, Emma?
None before the meeting, but I believe Hazlemere Town Councillors as non-bocunary interest. Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Round.
Yes, indeed. May I also declare that on item 8.3, application 0297, I am known personally to the applicant, socially, slightly. That's all. I have no other interest in the application.
Is it a non-bocunary interest, so you just know them?
I know the applicant, that's all.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you very much. Item 4. Emma, have there been any questions from members of the public?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Relevant updates. Peter Cleveland, any government legislation?
No updates for you today, thank you.
Moving on, the quarterly appeals report. Louise Chyandall.
Thank you, Chairman. Members will note from the agenda that five appeal decisions have been received in the last quarter. The first related to the erection of 10 bungalows on Tilford Road in Tilford. This was refused under delegated authority because it was inappropriate green belt development, because of its unsustainable location, the harm to the AOMB and AGLV, harm to the conservation area, and harm to Tilford Institute, a Grade II listed building. It was also refused because of its unacceptable impact on flood risk, the failure to demonstrate that protected species would not be harmed, and the failure to sign a legal agreement to secure affordable housing and infrastructure contributions. The inspector dismissed the appeal and agreed with the council on most of the above points. However, they did not conclude that development would harm the setting of the listed building. The second appeal decision related to the removal of free agricultural dwellings and the erection of a new dwelling on Shillingley Park Road in Chingfold. This was refused under delegated authority due to its isolated location, its impact on the AGLV, and the loss of trees. The inspector allowed this appeal, concluding that whilst the dwelling would be in an isolated location, as prior approval had previously been granted for the conversion of free barns into residential dwellings, it would be unreasonable to refuse permission. The inspector also disagreed with the council that the proposal would cause harm to the AGLV and to trees. The third appeal decision was for four semi-detached dwellings at 18 Critchmere Hill in Hazlemere. This was refused under delegated authority because of the overdevelopment of the site and its cramped appearance, as well as the impact on adjoining occupiers. The inspector dismissed the appeal, agreeing with the council's considerations, and he also concluded that there was insufficient information to demonstrate that there would not be harm to protected species. The fourth appeal was for the erection of a single-storey dwelling on Shortfield Common Road in Frensham. This was refused under delegated authority because of the inappropriate green belt development and harm to the AGLV. Following additional information submitted with the appellant at appeal stage, the inspector concluded that the applicant had sufficiently demonstrated that the land had been used as garden land and that the proposal would therefore be appropriate green belt development. The final appeal was for the erection of three dwellings on Moons Hill in Frensham. This was refused under delegated authority due to its isolated location and the harm to the countryside. The inspector concluded the proposal would be harmful to the countryside, but concluded that the site was not in an isolated location due to its location within a cluster of other buildings. Thank you, and if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions, members? The report is for noting, so noted, thank you very much. Quarterly enforcement report. Beth Helen Smith, please, welcome back.
Thank you, Chairman. This report is to provide members with an update on the progress of the enforcement team for the final quarter, January to March. The southern area specific updates start on page 14 and go on to 15. The enforcement statistics at the base of page 15, table 1, you'll note the cases on hand figure continues to fall, and actually at the close of business today it was at Due to this battle with the longer-standing cases that we're winning, it has ultimately had an impact on our performance against the performance indicator, which you'll note has dropped to 67%, but you'll note for the financial year, we were still performing well above the performance indicator. I think that concludes the update, Chairman, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions, members? No? Thank you for the committee to note the report. Is that noted? Thank you very much. Item 8, applications for planning permission. In the event of site inspections being necessary as a result of consideration of the application of this meeting, or indeed of the subsequent agenda that we get for the meeting on the 8th of June, the meeting site visits will be held on the 7th of June at a time to be Moving on to the planning applications, with your permission, I'd like to move item B2 to the first item on the agenda, as this is now for public speaking. Do I have your agreement to move B2 to the front of the list? Thank you very much, indeed. So Louise, the application, let me just turn to it very quickly. B2 is WA 2016 0297, erection of detached garage carport at Byways Demby Road, Hazlemere. Louise?
Thank you, Chairman. The site is located on the western side of Demby Road. The site is occupied by a detached two-storey residential property with an integral garage. The property benefits from a large frontage which currently comprises hard standing for vehicle parking and landscaping. This first photo is taken from the entrance to the property on Demby Road. As you can see, the property currently benefits from an integral garage. The proposed garage would be positioned to the right of photo in this position here. This top photo is taken from the south of Demby Road, looking towards the application property, which is here, and this second photo is taken from the roundabout with a closer view of the property. The garage would be positioned behind the hedge, here. The block plan shows the positioning of the proposed garage in this position, in the north-eastern corner of the site. The vehicular access to the site would remain as existing. The garage would have a footprint of 5.4 metres by 5 metres and would have a ridge height of 4.07. The building would be of traditional timber construction with a plain clay tile roof. The building would be visible above the existing landscaping on the boundary. Members will note that there has been a previously refused application on this site, which was refused and then dismissed at appeal. The proposed building would be slightly lower in height than the previously refused scheme and would have a hipped roof rather than a full hipped roof. The garage would be located in a similar position to the previously refused scheme and would have a reduced footprint of 2.1 metres squared. This table shows comparison between the two proposals. In conclusion, officers recommend refusal because the garage would be detrimental to the character of the area and the amenities of the street scene, due to its inappropriate positioning on the frontage immediately adjacent to the highway. Officers do not consider that the reasons for the previous appeal was dismissed have been overcome. The matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of the development, the impact on trees, and the impact on the highway, and the matters for members' judgment are the impact on visual amenity and the impact on neighbouring amenity. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Now we move to public speaking. There are no objectors, so the supporter, Mr. Chapman, to speak. You have four minutes, Mr. Chapman.
Is this on? Firstly, I'd like to thank members of the committee this evening for giving me the opportunity to speak in favour of the proposal. As members are aware, in assessing the proposal, officers have disappointingly recommended the application for refusal. Members will be aware that the site is within the built-up urban area of Hazlemere and has no special policy or landscape designations placed upon it. As way of background, a previous proposal for an outbuilding was refused by officers and subsequently dismissed at appeal in 2011. The proposal before you has benefited from the assessment of the inspector's decision, and significant alterations have been made to the proposed outbuilding in order to address and overcome the previous concerns. The height and depth of the proposed outbuilding have been reduced by some 600 and 400 millimetres respectively, and these alterations are far more significant, I believe, than what is demonstrated within the officer's report. The building would be situated with a natural niche within the front garden, meaning that it is well secluded within the street scene. Additional planting could be added to provide increased screening, and this could be dealt with by way of a reasonably worded condition if members felt it expedient to do so. Notwithstanding this, it is considered that such is the scale and in-keeping design of the outbuilding, there would be no material harm to the verdant nature of Demby Road. Indeed, there are a number of outbuildings positioned to the front of dwellings within the immediate area, namely within Scotland Lane and the old Hazlemere Road, and these exist without detriment to the verdant nature of the area. It is concern of the appellant that officers have not looked beyond the previous appeal decision, and as such fears that the merits of the application may have been overlooked. It also seems to be the view of officers that if development can be seen, it is therefore not acceptable in principle. It is my submission that this should not be the test, and I make the point that the application be assessed on its merits rather than utilising the inspector's decision as a document to prevent all development taking place. In summary, it is submitted that the application before you represents a carefully considered, attractive and in-keeping outbuilding situated within a location where the principle of such development is acceptable. I do not know whether members have taken the opportunity to visit the site, but if not, I would think it to be extremely useful in order to do so, so you can see the site within its context. I hope members have found this helpful, and I thank you for your consideration of this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Members, open up the discussion to you. Councillor Round.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Having listened to what has been said and read the stuff, I must say I think it would be, particularly since I gather there's been only one objection and the other residents in that road support this application, I can't see that it would be particularly harmful. I have been to the gentleman's house a long time ago, and I do recall there's a significant amount of vegetation in that front garden that would probably obscure it completely or pretty much, except for the top of the roof. It might be that we would benefit from a site visit to confirm that to all of us if we can't agree here. And I'll go and say something else, but I've forgotten it, I'm sorry. I'll come back later. Thank you. Thank you.
Councillor Mulliner.
I think I agree with councillor Round that a site visit would be a good idea. Our problem is the inspector has expressed himself or herself in very trenchant form, and I think one of the things which would occur to me is the impact of likely precedent if we allowed this, whether there'd be then a great eruption of other garages. Probably, depending on whether there are existing garages at the moment. It's an unusual one where the neighbours don't mind, but it has gone to appeal, and the appeal was dismissed apparently firmly, so I'd like to propose that a site visit would be in order.
I would like to think we've had a site visit yesterday, members, but if you wish to propose and have a second before a site visit, we'll take a vote on that.
Sorry, may I propose we have a site visit?
A second of? Councillor Mulliner? Those in favour of a site visit, then, please show.
One, two.
Those against?
One, two, three, four, five.
That is lost. Members, continuing.
Looking at the chart showing the differences between the refused scheme and this one, the differences really don't seem to be that much, and as councillor Mulliner said, the inspector's conclusions were pretty solid. I really don't think that these very minor alterations make sufficient difference to justify giving consent to it, so I shall vote with the officers.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll just briefly, there's one point about whether there are other garages within that particular road, and actually within that street, there isn't garages forward of the property, so a matter of the point that you raised, there isn't. But there are in surrounding streets, but in the immediate vicinity there isn't. And just the other point, the local plan policies, the MPPF and the SPD applied at that time, so they're all relevant in the consideration that the inspector took and as we're considering now. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, indeed. So, members, if there are no further questions, we'll move to the recommendation on page 49 of the agenda. Recommendation is to refuse for the following reason, and an informative on page 50. Have those in favour of refusal, please show.
One, two, three, four, five.
Those against?
One.
Abstention?
Two.
Thank you very much. Therefore, permission is refused. Continuing on to, now back to item B1, WA 2015 1805, erection of a single-storey ancillary office building to the rear, following demolition of the existing outbuilding at 72 The High Street, Hazlemere. Louise?
Thank you, Chairman. Site is located on the eastern side of Hazlemere High Street. Site is occupied by a two-storey building which is currently in use as an estate agent's. The building is Grade II listed. There is a large amenity area to the rear of the building. The site is located within Hazlemere Town Centre and is also within Hazlemere Conservation Area. To the immediate north of the site is a residential property here, with its associated amenity space to the rear. This is also Grade II listed. There is another residential property to the south and associated amenity space. Properties fronting Hazlemere High Street are predominantly commercial in character, with some residential above. This first photo at the top of the screen shows the main building, which is Grade II listed, and the second photo is taken from within the garden, looking south towards the garden cottage. As you can see, there is a high brick wall and some trees along the boundary. This photo is taken towards the property at number 74 High Street. This is the block plan. The building would be positioned in the centre of the site, 10 metres from the boundary with 74 High Street, and 17 metres from their building. It would be positioned 8 metres from the boundary to the south with garden cottage, and 15 metres from the host property's rear wall. The building would have a depth of 5 metres and a width of 11.5 metres and a height of 5.1 metres. The building would be faced with brickwork and horizontal timber cladding and would have a plain clay tile pitched roof. The building would be used as office accommodation in association with the existing A2 unit. And in conclusion, officers consider that additional office space in the sustainable town centre location would be acceptable. There would be no harm to, and the proposal would preserve the character and special interest of the surrounding listed buildings and the conservation area. And whilst the proposed building would be visible from adjoining residential properties, officers consider the distance of 8 metres to the south and 10 metres to the north to be sufficient to prevent an adverse impact on the adjoining occupiers. Whilst the erection of a building may intensify the use of this area, the proposal would be unlikely to result in excessive noise and disturbance, which would be out of character with the town centre location in which it's located. The matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of development, the town centre, highways, archaeology, trees and biodiversity. The matters for members' judgment are the impact on visual amenity, the character of the conservation area and the setting of the listed building, and the impact on residential amenity. Thank you, Chairman, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Louise. Members, throw it open to you for discussion. I would like to say thank you very much for your good attendance at the site visit in the usual sudden weather of rain on the site visit. Anyway, councillor Mulliner?
Thank you, Chairman. I have seen the site, both at the site visit and from the neighbour's garden. I've got a feel for the area. It's a charming, secluded verdant, to use the current term, green area, very quiet. And I think this is an interesting test of the planning system, because its purpose is actually to provide some check on the otherwise untrammeled rights of property owners to do what they wish with their property. And my feeling, I'm afraid, having thought about it, is that plonking a large structure in the middle of a very open garden is something which I can't support. I think the impact on the visual amenity of the area, even though it's a secluded one, on the residential amenity of the neighbour, there's only one who's directly affected, is something we should consider, and my colleagues feel, I will not know for a moment, but my own feeling is that this is not something which, where any obvious benefits outweigh a very obvious harm. I think it's always unfortunate for an owner of land if they find that constraints of various sorts impact their wishes to develop. You can think of trees here preventing the building being too, being close to a boundary where it would do less visual harm, because it would be part of the boundary. It can't be apparently too close to the office, because then it would impact on the setting of the listed building. And if it's right in the middle, as it's now currently proposed, then it's affecting obviously the visual amenity and the residential amenity of the adjoining owner. So, I have some sympathy with the owner for having facing this library of constraints. That's a matter which any owner has to confront, and in my view anyway, subject to what I hear, this is not something I feel I can support.
Thank you, councillor Mulliner. Councillor King?
Thank you very much, Chairman, and my apologies for being late. I got called in a meeting. First of all, could I please ask a question? On page 23 and 24, where we have the elevation drawings, we appear to have potentially a building with use for two stories, that there are windows in the roof space, but the text says it's a single-story building. I am, so that's one question, is it a single-story building, or is that, are they intending to use the roof space? So that's a question, first of all. I too was glad I went on the site visit, I thought it was very worthwhile. The building as proposed, to my mind, is really at odds with the listed building. It doesn't look like a garden shed, it doesn't look like a summer house, it doesn't look like a studio, it looks like a residential dwelling to me. And I'm really unhappy about the setting of the listed building and the character, I just don't think it's compatible. And I'm sorry, I will be joining councillor Mulliner, voting against it. Thank you.
Louise, do you like to answer the question on single or two-story?
Thank you, Chairman. It is a single-story building, the roof lights have been provided in the roof space to provide light to the ground floor element. If members were concerned about an additional story being created and that having an impact on the neighbour, then we could attach a condition preventing them from doing any sort of mezzanine floors in there.
Please come back.
Thank you very much, Chairman, for allowing me to come back, because I should have extended what I wanted to say as well. I have concerns about this building and its future. At the moment, the listed building is an office property. Under current government planning legislation, this could be returned to a residential property without having to come back to this authority for anything. And I think that the association between that and this building could potentially lead us to a problem. I have discussed it with Louise in the past, she knows I've had this concern, and I'm sure she'll come back with something on that. Thank you.
Louise, do you want to come back straight away, before councillor Round?
Thank you, Chairman. First of all, with regards to the new building in the garden, if I can draw your attention to page 36 of the agenda, there is a condition which restricts the building to be in use for only A2 purposes, and there is, that also removes the permitted development rights to change the use of that building. In addition to this, the main building is a listed building, and as such that wouldn't benefit from permitted development rights to convert that into dwelling. Thank you.
Councillor Round.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Louise, for that, because I was, until councillor King mentioned it, I was going to raise the same issue. We can't assume that these buildings that, if you like, sadly become offices will stay like that forever, it is known they do revert to residential use from time to time. May I, at this point, I hope as a matter of severe overkill, but best to be safe, declare a slight non-bocunary interest in that this is fairly near Hazlemere Museum, of which my wife is the chairman. But what I say now has nothing to do with the museum, from which, from the grounds of which this proposed building would be hardly visible, might just, but I think it would be visible from the public space behind, overlooking the beautiful view behind Hazlemere High Street. And I tend to agree with both councillors, King and councillor Mulliner, that this is just a little bit too big and imposing, and doesn't look like an office, and we might regret it. So I tend to think of refusing it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, anyone else? Councillor Inchbald?
Well, I have to disagree with my colleagues.
Well, I have to disagree with my colleagues. If there is a genuine need for further office space, I think that this is as attractive a way of providing it as one could find. I don't see how you could possibly build what effectively mimics a listed building there. I wonder whether in fact there is any proper access to it other than through the building that we went through yesterday. Because if there isn't, then turning it into a dwelling would be extremely difficult. And I'm afraid, I have, I can't see any objection to it at all. I take on board the concerns of the neighbour, but I'm afraid that things change in this world and you can't have a view from your garden protected forever. So I will be voting with the officer's recommendation.
Thank you very much. Councillor Piper.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to agree with councillor Ingevall. The only access or this property, the rear garden where this property, proposed building would be sighted, backs on to Swan Barn which is the National Trust land and there is no vehicle access to the rear garden for potential future residential use. Having attended at the site visit yesterday and I looked at the boundaries with the neighbouring properties, the property to the north, the furthest part of his, the building, is what appears to be a workshop come potting shed come general purpose, not actually dwelling accommodation. And as such, I don't think that there is any loss of amenity to them. They have a wire link fence between themselves and the proposed site, which should they feel that there is a loss of amenity from the sighting, then they could always put up fencing. So I actually cannot come up with a good reason to refuse this and I will be supporting the officer recommendation.
Thank you very much indeed. Just make a few comments, the town council had no reason to object, are the subject to listed building officers' agreement that this should go ahead and one doesn't easily get past listed buildings officer in this establishment. I think condition four on the agenda on page 36 covers the point of PDOs and everything else and we have some control over any future development there. And as councillor Ingevall said, the access is not available for any other property, so my simple thoughts. Councillor Mulliner.
Just briefly, thank you very much for letting me come back. I think, I spoke to Louise this afternoon, I think one thing one always needs to bear in mind is that conditions can always be basically applied to be removed and one, obviously, they would have to get permission from the council if that was refused, they could appeal. So I think one should remember that these conditions, while they obviously provide an obstacle, it's not an immovable obstacle. Is that a fair comment, Louise?
Thank you. Louise, do you want to come back?
Thank you. Whilst, yes, you can apply to have conditions removed, we would then assess it against current planning policies and if it was not considered to be necessary anymore, then yes, we would allow that to be removed or if we didn't, then they would have the right of appeal. However, I'd remind councillors that they cannot make a decision on the basis of what may happen in the future, you need to make a decision on what is in front of us now. And if a subsequent application did come in to remove that condition, that would be at the point at which you could object to that part of the application if you so wished. If I can also come back on a couple of other points as well. We've pointed out that there's no pedestrian, no vehicle access to the rear, there isn't also any pedestrian access either. And with regards to the fencing, they would be restricted because both the neighbour and the application site are listed buildings, so they don't benefit from permitted development with regards to fencing. However, if councillors are concerned that the boundary is open and if they felt it was reasonable, we could request a landscaping scheme via a condition to screen that boundary further. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Members, if there are no further questions, can we move to the recommendation? It's set out on page, subject to conditions 1 to 5, informatives 1 to 14 and set out in a report on pages 35 to 37, permission be granted. May I ask for those in favour, please show?
One, two, three, four.
Those against?
One, two, three.
Abstentions?
One.
Fine, permission is granted, thank you. Members? Item B3, WA 2016 0068. Erection of two detached houses with parking at South Down House, Hale House Lane, Chert. Ryan, it's all yours to introduce the subject, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Yep, so we'll start with the location plan. The site is located to the north of Hale House Lane, near to the junction with Crossways in the centre of the village.
Hold on. Ryan, I don't think we can hear the...
Apologies, sorry.
Need the microphone a little closer, thank you.
Sorry, let me start that again. The site is located to the north of Hale House Lane, near to the junction with Crossways in the centre of the village settlement of Chert. The site was once occupied with garaging and storage but is now vacant and generally level. Access to the site is located from Hale House Lane and is shared with other units along Chert Road. To the west of the site is a retail unit in use on the ground floor with residential use above. I'll just point that out here. Access to the site is located, oh, sorry, a long garage building at this property adjoins the northern boundary of the site, which you can see on the aerial just here. And to the east is a footpath which leads to the playing fields. If we start with the top left photograph, this is taken from the access from Hale House Lane. The photograph shows the adjoining properties to the north and the west of the site. The top right photograph here, again taken from the access from Hale House Lane, showing the single-storey garage which borders the north of the site, just here. The bottom left photograph was taken from within the site and shows the closed-boarded fence which marks the southern west boundary. And the bottom right photograph was taken from Hale House Lane, near to the junction with Crossways. Two detached dwellings are proposed. The properties would share an access off Hale House Lane and would be provided with five off-street parking spaces. Relatively large areas of amenity space would be provided to the rear. Surrey County Council Highways Authority has assessed the proposal and consider it to be acceptable in highway safety terms. Plot one would comprise the three-bedroom detached property with a total height of 8.2 metres and a total gross internal floor area of 92.5 square metres. Plot two would also comprise a three-bedroom detached property with a total height of 8.2 metres and a gross internal floor area of 92 square metres. The proposed dwellings would be designed in a traditional style with plain clay hanging tiles, white UPVC windows facing brickwork and cast stone sills under a half-round ridge and hipped red tiled roof. Planning permission was granted in 2013 for the erection of two semi-detached dwellings following demolition of existing storage buildings. Here on this slide you can see the comparison between the current scheme and that scheme. Those dwellings feature three bedrooms. The differences between the current proposal and that application are that this current application proposes two detached dwellings as opposed to a pair of semi-detached dwellings. This current application also proposes one further parking space, taking the total to five spaces. Furthermore, the current proposal features dwellings which would measure 8.2 metres in height, which is 0.5 metres higher than the previous scheme, which proposed a total height of 7.7 metres. And here you can see the comparison of the principal elevations of the current proposal on the right there and the 2013 scheme on the left. In conclusion, the proposal is within the defined rural settlement of Chert and is therefore considered an appropriate location for two new dwellings. It would be appropriate green belt development and would have an acceptable design and appearance and would have an acceptable impact on the surrounding neighbours. In addition, parking and access would also be acceptable. The matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of development, housing land supply, green belt considerations, highways and parking and the impacts on the SPAs. The matters of judgment are design and impact on visual amenity, impact on the AOMB and AGLV, impact on residential amenity and the standard of accommodation and amenity space. Can I draw members' attention to the update sheet which provides an analysis of the bedroom sizes against the national technical space standards? Bedrooms two and three in units one and two do not meet the recommended standards. However, taken into consideration the lack of local plan policy requiring this, this is not considered a sufficient reason to warrant refusal. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Ryan. Members, the floor is yours. In that case, we already have an extent of permission. I think we'll move to the recommendation. Just find it. Recommendation is permission be granted, subject to conditions 1 to 11 on pages 78, 73 of the agenda report and informatives 1 to 6 on pages 74, 75 of the agenda report. May I have those in favour of the proposal, please show?
That's unanimous.
Thank you very much indeed, permission is granted. Moving on to item B4. Change of use of office and flat together with erection of extensions and alterations provide a pair of seven detached dwellings following demolition of existing buildings to the rear and chimney stack at Jacobson House, Barfold Lane, Chert. Rebecca.
Thank you, Chairman. The site is located on the northern side of Barfold Lane, falling within the rural settlement area of Chert. It is occupied by a two-storey building to the front with single-storey linked extensions to the rear. The building is split into two sections with the eastern element set at a lower ridge height than that of the western element. At ground floor level, the building is currently unoccupied but is undergoing internal works to facilitate a change of use from office to residential. This change of use is subject to a prior approval grant in December 2015. At first floor level, the building is in residential use providing a self-contained one-bed flat. The site is bordered to the west and north by a commercial car garage, showroom and associated parking area. There is a neighbouring building to the east which is currently in commercial use as a mail-order company and St John's Church of England Infant School is located directly opposite the site to the south. Members will see the existing site building in the top left photo with the neighbouring building to the east of the application site in the top right. The surrounding commercial car garage and associated parking area is shown in the bottom left and the infant school directly opposite the site is shown in the bottom right photo. Permission is sought for first floor and roof extensions to the front and rear of the building. The proposal also seeks permission for a change of use of the building from office to residential. The principle of this change of use has been established under a prior approval grant. Internal reconfiguration of the building would take place to provide for two separate residential units comprising one three-bedroomed unit and one four-bedroomed unit. Each property would have its own entrance off Barfold Lane and five parking spaces would be provided within the site. As part of the proposal, the existing single-storey linked extensions to the rear would be demolished to provide for a rear amenity space for both properties. Moving on to the elevations, the next few slides show the existing and proposed elevations of the building. From the front elevation, members will see the proposed changes to the ridge height and the gable extension. To the rear, the existing outbuildings would be demolished. And from the side elevations, firstly the east and secondly the west, members will see the proposed rear extensions at first floor and roof level as well as the rear amenity space provided through the demolition of the existing outbuildings. Turning next to the proposed floor plans, the proposed vertical subdivision can be seen which creates a four-bed unit and a three-bed unit. At first floor level, there would be bedrooms and bathrooms in both units and further bedrooms would be provided at second floor level in the roof space. The site on, the slide on the screen shows what has been granted under prior approval. There would be no difference in the number of units but as previously described, the current proposal includes extensions. In conclusion, the proposal would contribute in a small way to the housing supply within the rural settlement boundary and it would constitute appropriate development in the green belt. The change of use from office to residential has already been established by way of a prior approval grant. Officers consider the proposed extensions to be of an acceptable size, scale and design and there would be no adverse impact on the AOMB, AGLV, to residential amenity or highway safety. The floor space of the two units would exceed the recommended space standards and the proposed parking would comply with guidance. The matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of development, housing land supply, green belts, loss of employment land, highways, effect on the SPAs and SAC and space standards. The matters of judgment are impact on countryside on the AOMB and AGLV, design of visual amenity and impact on residential amenity. If I could draw members' attention to the update sheet, this provides a breakdown of the bedroom sizes for the two units. All proposed bedrooms would meet the recommended national technical space standards. The officer recommendation is therefore that permission should be granted, subject to the recommended conditions and informatives set out in the agenda report. Thank you, Chairman.
Rebecca, thanks for that and thank you for photographs that we could actually see. Point I've raised a number of times recently, Peter knows all about that, so thank you for that. Members? Councillor Round.
Thank you, Chairman, I just have a question out of curiosity more than anything else. What was this building before? And does it have any listed status?
All yours, Rebecca.
Thank you, Chairman. No, the building does not have any listed status. Its current lawful use is office or a mixed office use at ground floor and there's a single self-contained one-bed flat at first floor level, that's lawful. Thank you.
I know, it's just I noticed a rather interesting south elevation would change. I suppose that's not a material consideration for the planning application. Thank you.
Councillor Ingevall.
Seems to me, Chairman, that this is a very sensible way of using an existing building, adapting it, removing some rather unsightly buildings and turning it into something useful. So I'm all in favour. Thank you.
Thank you for that, I totally agree. Right, I think it's no further questions then, members, let's move to the recommendation. Recommendation is that permission be granted, subject to conditions 1 to 13 on pages 104, 108 of the agenda report, informatives 1 to 6 on pages 108 to 110 of the agenda report. Those in favour, please show?
That's unanimous.
Unanimous, thank you, permission granted. Item B5, erection of four dwellings together with associated works following relevant demolition of the unlisted building in the conservation area, Little Mead, Church Lane, Hazemere. Rebecca, it's all yours again, please.
Thank you, Chairman. The site is located on the northern side of Church Lane, within the developed area of Hazemere and Hazemere Conservation Area. The site is occupied by a detached bungalow with associated amenity space and detached garage which is sighted to the east of the site. The surrounding area is predominantly residential in character. The site is bordered by retirement housing to the northwest and residential properties to the north. A train line runs to the east and south of the site. There is established vegetation on the southern and eastern boundaries and a mixture of closed board fencing and hedging on the northern and western site boundaries. Turning to the site photos, the existing dwelling is shown in the top left photograph with... with the existing detached garage in the right. The bottom-left photograph shows the western site boundary with the retirement housing shown beyond. This is set at a higher ground level. The bottom-right photograph is taken from the retirement housing looking on to the application site behind the hedging. A few more site photographs, these are taken from the street scene from Church Lane looking into the site behind the vegetation and that would be the corner plot there. Permission is sought for the erection of two pairs of semi-detached properties and the erection of a detached four-bay garage to the north-east of the site. The dwellings would front Church Lane with access on their side elevations. Plots one and four would be three-bedroom properties and plots two and three would be two-bedroom properties. The proposal would utilise the existing site access. Turning to the elevations, the next two slides will show the proposed elevations of the dwellings. Firstly, that of plots one and two and secondly, plots three and four. The materials would comprise brickwork with clay tile hanging to the upper floors and plain clay roof tiles. There would be dormers at eaves level and front bay windows which would serve plots one and four. Turning to the floor plans, there would be living room space, kitchen diner and bathroom at ground floor level for both plots one and two, sorry. At first floor level, two bedrooms would be provided for plot two and three bedrooms would be provided for plot three. The same proposed floor plan layout would be mirrored for plots three and four. The proposed four-bay garage would measure 9.8 metres in width and five metres in depth. The external walls would be clad with dark-stained feather-edged boarding with a slate roof. This slide shows the street scene from Church Lane. The proposed garage in would be set back into the site to the north-east of the proposed dwellings with the access in the south-eastern corner of the site. The proposal is a revision of an earlier scheme which members will recall was granted at the council's Southern Area Committee in September 2015. The current slide shows a comparison of the site plans for the current proposal compared with that of the previously approved scheme. As members will see, the current proposal would maintain the same number and type of dwellings as that of the previous permission. The main differences between the current proposal and the previously approved scheme are that the dwellings would as part of the current proposal be accessed on their side elevations as opposed to the front. All dwellings as part of the current proposal would be of the same depth. Plots one and four would be set slightly back from two and three and the dwellings would have a slightly increased ridge height of approximately half a metre. Looking at the comparison of the proposed elevations, members will see that there would be slight changes to fenestration as part of the current scheme firstly with plots one and two and secondly with plots three and four. In conclusion, the proposal is considered to be of an acceptable size, scale and form which would not result in any harm to the conservation area. The site is considered to be a suitable location for the provision of new housing and there would be no material harm to neighbouring amenity or highway safety. The matters of technical opinion are the principle of development, housing land supply, housing mix, trees, highways, effect on SPAs and space standards. The matters of judgment are the impact on the conservation area, design and visual impact and impact on residential amenity. Once again, if I could draw members' attention to the update sheet, where a breakdown of the bedroom sizes for all four units are provided, all proposed bedrooms would meet the recommended national space technical standards. The officer recommendation is that permission should therefore be granted subject to recommended conditions and informatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Members. councillor Round.
Thank you, Chair. I note that Sari has no objection on traffic safety, I think you said, or something like that. But it does occur to me that this is right on one of the most dangerous bits of road in Hazelmeir and I wonder if it is possible for us to put a condition on or seek to filch or someone, sorry, to filch a little bit of the front to improve the access to that railway bridge. It's quite a sharp bend there and a blind bend. It is very dangerous. I mention this because many, some years ago, two houses were given permission to be built at the entrance of Krishmir Hill off the Hind Road and it was such a shame that the council did not do a similar thing there to take the first two or three feet in order to improve that rejection which is equally dangerous. So in general, I think this is all, this is good, should go ahead, but I would love if we could take two or three feet, sorry, this is probably me, to improve that bit of the road. Thank you.
I think the real worry is that you already have from last year extent permission on exactly that same access and I don't think we can change the conditions. I would ask Rebecca or Peter to comment further.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I mean, having regard to the extent scheme, it wouldn't really be reasonable to impose a condition in this regard, with regards to site access. As you correctly state, the Highway Authority has not raised any objection. They have recommended one condition relating to space being laid out for vehicle parking but they haven't raised any objection on the grounds of highway safety. And once again, having regard to the extent scheme, officers believe that it would not be reasonable to impose a condition. Thank you.
I wondered that. Actually, it was only last September, was it? So the current council, sorry, I've forgotten it.
I know your feelings, so I think we all echo them on that. councillor Inceford.
No, I was just getting ready to put my hand up to vote.
councillor Piper.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. I concur with what councillor Rounder said about the access being in, to my mind, a poor location on this very narrow road over the railway. I notice that under condition three, it talks about no development shall commence until a construction transport management plan to include details of parking for vehicles of site personnel, operatives and visitors, loading and unloading of plant and materials. Can I assume that this means off-road parking, i.e. we're not going to have large delivery vehicles with timber and bricks parking in the road, which would really cause a hazard?
Would indeed. Rebecca.
Sorry, thank you, Chairman. Yes, we would expect as part of the condition in the submitted management plan to see that all deliveries and parking of site personnel would take place within the site so as to ensure that there would be no harm to highway safety. Thank you.
councillor Maldoner.
Make a slightly counterintuitive point. I know that corner extremely well and if anything, having the possibility of more cars coming out might make people slow down a bit. In fact, if you're coming out of there, you've got fairly good views both across the bridge, if you like, and up to the corner. But what worries me is when I see people frankly hurtling down the hill and slightly cutting across the corner. It's not something I think that this particular development is going to have any adverse effect on, it's more the behaviour of existing drivers. They at least can be guaranteed to be coming out of their drive at a very slow speed. But I do share the basic gut concerns of councillor Round about that particular part of Hazelmeir.
Thank you. Well, members, there's no further questions, nothing further from the officers. The recommendation is permission be granted subject to conditions 1 to 19 on pages 136 to 143 of the Agenda Report, informatives 1 to 11 on pages 143 and 145 of the Agenda Report. Have those in favour of the recommendation to grant, please show.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Those against?
One.
Permission is granted. And moving on to item B6, WA20160190, erection of two dwellings following demolition of the existing building at 19 St Christopher's Road, Hazelmeir. Louise to introduce this one.
Apologies, we're just going to fix the technology issue. Thank you, Chairman. The site is located on the western side of St Christopher's Road in Hazelmeir. The site is occupied by a three-story detached building which is currently vacant but was in previous use as a costume hire shop. Car parking is currently available at both the front of the building and the rear. This photo shows the front of the building and the car parking in front of it. 21 St Christopher's Road, a residential property, is located here and 17 St Christopher's Road is located at the other side of the access, here. This photo shows the existing car parking at the rear in front of May Cottage which is immediately to the back of the site. This photograph is taken towards the rear of the subject site and here you can see the adjoining residential property at 21 and the adjoining residential property the other side of the access road. The building would be positioned here in the centre of the site. It would occupy a larger footprint than the existing building which is shown dashed in blue. Two units would be provided as a pair of semi-detached properties with amenity space in a courtyard in the centre of the building. Car parking for 19A would be provided at the rear of the site and car parking for 19B would be provided at the front. This slide shows the proposed elevations. The building would be three stories at the rear and two stories at the front, similar to the existing arrangement which exists on site present. In the centre of the site, which you can see from the side elevations, the building would be reduced to a single story where it adjoins the courtyard proposed for the amenity space. The north elevation would face the adjoining property at 21 St Christopher's Road and the south elevation would front the access road and then 17 St Christopher's Road beyond that. 19A, which is the proposed property to the rear of the site, would be accessed at lower ground floor level. A living room, kitchen and WC would be provided at this level with bedroom, bathroom and study at ground floor and a bedroom and bathroom at first floor level. 19B would be located at the front of the site. This would have a similar layout but would instead be accessed at ground floor level because of the changing ground levels across the site. This image shows the proposed street scene. The dashed red line shows the existing building. Members will note that a previous scheme was granted planning approval for two dwellings at the site and this shows a comparison between the two block plans. As you can see, the footprint is slightly wider, however, having regard to the single story element in the middle, whereas the approved scheme was three stories across the entire site and two stories at the front where the land level was higher. This is a comparison, street scene elevation between the previously approved scheme and the current approved scheme. Members will note that the building is larger than that previously approved. And here is a table which shows a comparison between the previously approved scheme and the current scheme. The total height is slightly smaller but with a different roof arrangement and the height at the rear is slightly bigger with the width being slightly bigger and the depth slightly bigger as well, but both provided to two-bedroom dwellings. In conclusion, officers consider the site would be an acceptable location for new residential development that will contribute towards the council's housing and land supply. The loss of the retail unit has already been established as part of the previously approved scheme. Officers consider that the proposal would be of an acceptable design having regard to the existing building that would be removed and that the proposal would have an acceptable impact on adjoining occupiers. The car parking provided would be in accordance with the council's guidelines and the Highway Authority have raised no objection to the proposal. The matters of principle and technical opinion are the principle of development, the loss of the retail use, housing land supply, highways, drainage and flooding, the impact on the integrity of the SPAs and land contamination. The matters for members' judgment are the design and visual impact, the standard of accommodation and provision of amenity space and the impact on residential amenity. Thank you, Chairman, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Louise, and we could see the photographs again, so thank you for that. Members. Moving rapidly on then. Recommendation is permission be granted subject to conditions 1 to 17 on pages 179, 184 of the Agenda Report, informatives 1 to 8 on pages 184 to 186 of the Agenda Report. Those in favour, please show.
Unanimous.
Unanimous, thank you all very much indeed. No reason to exclude the press and public, so that completes our meeting. Thank you very much. But having said that, very quickly, when I asked Mr Chapman to come down and speak from the microphone down here, did members find that a little more acceptable than standing back there with poor sound?
The microphone's far more efficient, I could hear him perfectly. When they use that one, I can never hear them.
Well, if you notice, they start off with the microphone and the paper up here, they're reading their script from and one or other drops and the volume disappears and everything else, so I'll just make that recommendation through to the others. Also, try to get some of the screens to work, they don't today. Thank you all very much indeed.